So with our special session, our first item of business is establishing a quorum. And we will be reading several ordinances for second reading and then one for first reading that we do need to suspend tonight of the two for first reading and then one resolution. So the ordinances for second reading, I'll just read through the title and see if there are any comments or questions. 8820 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $283,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued to pay part of the costs of improvements to this municipality's sanitary sewer system and declaring an emergency introduced by council member Crowell. And if no comments, then I'll read 9120. And this is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens, Ohio and Ohio University for law enforcement assistance introduced by council member Graves. If no comments, I'll go on now to the ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 9220 is an ordinance approving the city of Athens COVID-19 rent mortgage emergency relief grant program authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hocking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, to administer said program and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by council member Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to go ahead and read all of this very important ordinance. Whereas the COVID-19 crisis has severely impacted many local residents who are struggling to pay their rent or mortgage due to loss of employment and whereas the city of Athens COVID-19 rent mortgage emergency relief grant program, the program, is being created to assist city of Athens residents who have been adversely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and have demonstrated a financial need and whereas the city wishes to partner with HAPCAP to manage the program in an amount not to exceed $25,000 as set forth in the grant agreement. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, section one, Athens City Council hereby approves the city of Athens COVID-19 rent mortgage emergency relief grant program. A copy of said guidelines are attached hereto and incorporated herein as exhibit A. Said guidelines may be amended from time to time in a manner not materially adverse to the city. Section two, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with HAPCAP to administer said program, a copy of which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, in an amount not to exceed $25,000 in assistance grants of up to $1,000 for eligible city of Athens residents who have demonstrated a financial need for rent and mortgage payments and using substantially the same guidelines as the attached exhibit A. Section three, the city auditor is hereby authorized and directed to make the appropriate entries and issue warrants or vouchers pursuant thereof. And section four, this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio to immediately authorize the city's financial assistance to residents who have been adversely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. And it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor. Thank you, President Isley.
And I think we'll now have a motion to suspend the rules for this.
Oh, we, I'm sorry. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 09220.
Second?
Second by council member Claude Felter. So we have a motion and second for suspending. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, the rules have been suspended, council member Crowell.
Thank you. And due to the very, you know, immediate relief needed by some residents, we would like to pass this tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to approve 09220.
Second?
Seconded by council member Claude Felter. All right. And so we have a motion and second for approval. Are there any other, any comments? Okay. All those in favor, oh, did council?
I was just going to say that I'm just so glad that our city is doing this. We may be able to bail people out of really, really difficult situations and help them to be able to stay in their own homes. So I've just been so glad that we're doing this. So thank you very much, Mayor Patterson, for connecting us with, with HAPCAP for this.
And council member Graves.
Thank you, President Isley. I also just am thrilled that we have the opportunity to offer this program here in the city and wanted to mention that the court has requested information about this that they could send out to attorneys in town to make sure that all attorneys who would represent both landlords and tenants in possible eviction proceedings know the details of this and could help spread word about eligibility, just perhaps intercepting some of those cases before they ever get to court. So I just wanted to pass that along and also thank you to the administration for bringing this and it's, I think, a wonderful idea and program.
Okay. Mayor Patterson.
I would just like to put an exclamation mark on what council member Grace just said is that it's paramount for this to get out, that information to get out before it even gets to the proceedings level of someone having to go through that process because under that process, someone could still be evicted and, and so any relief would not help them at that point in time. So we will certainly make sure we're getting that out, council member Grace, through all channels possible to where people are aware of this program.
Okay. Thanks for the comments.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Thank you. 9320 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an extension agreement with the United Seniors of Athens County for space utilization in the community center and declaring an emergency introduced by council member Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'll go ahead and read this ordinance. The mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a lease extension agreement with the United Seniors of Athens County through July 31, 2021, to provide exclusive use of office space and scheduled program and activity space for seniors in the community center. And again, this ordinance is an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio, in that the current agreement expires on August 31, 2020 and shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor. So this is simply extending our lease agreement with United Seniors of, of Ohio, uh, at, under the current terms of the lease agreement for, for one additional year. And during this pandemic, we, we, we think this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. And are there any comments or questions? Okay. Thank you. We'll now move on to a one reading resolution. This is resolution 1120, a resolution supporting the tentative award of a contract for construction of the dewatering project number 320 and is introduced by council member Graves.
Thank you, President Isley. Just for a tiny bit of background refresher information on this resolution, this is part of the city dewatering project and ordinance 07120 authorized the advertisement and acceptance of bids for this project. This is a, the resolution we have tonight is a slightly different process than what we've, we normally have to do. It does come up occasionally, but it's, we have to show that, that we are in support of this, this awarding of this bid and in order for the EPA DFA financing to be approved. So I just wanted to give that. And the, the resolution is, be it resolved by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, section one, Athens City Council does hereby support the tentative award of a contract for construction of the dewatering project number 320 contingent upon the city of Athens receiving funding from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, Division of Environmental and Financial Assistance. In section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor. And just for a bit more information, the bids were received last Friday and have been reviewed and the Department of Engineering and Public Works is recommending that we accept the bid from Mechanical Construction Company and the base amount of that bid is And bid option one includes $44,170 for solar power. So it's a total of $2,976,000. And that, but we are just saying that we are in support of acceptance of a tentative bid contingent on receipt of the financing. So, and I would like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution with all that information provided.
Second?
Second from council member Smedley.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and second, are there any other comments or questions? Council member Claude Felter?
Um, point of clarification, I think maybe you answered this previously, but I just cannot exactly recall the answer. Um, that's a lot of money. Will this affect people's water bills?
No, not. This is a project that is going to be financed on a 0% loan, we believe, through the Ohio EPA DFA program. And please, administration, correct me if I misstep or misspeak on this information, but this is, is something that has been in progress for quite some time and, and the project has come through at various stages as far as authorizing engineering and design and this bid process. And so it's something that has already been accounted for in our water sewer budget. And so this is not something that is going to be, a new cost that is not anticipated.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, please.
Mayor Patterson.
Also, also to share, council member Grace is spot on with the way she described that. It won't lead to increases in rates other than those that were already projected with the original wastewater treatment plant renovation. The, one of the things that it will do over the long haul is it'll reduce our costs from hauling sludge because, you know, right now the moisture content is very high in the sludge and so we're hauling a lot of sludge and a lot of water. This dewatering will bring that down and ultimately, under our current flow rates, will drop, will, will decrease what our expenses are for having to haul that sludge. Now, keep in mind, counsel, that, you know, in the future, depending on how things bear out for the county sewer extension, our flows will go back up. But again, this, this project will certainly be helpful with the, the future county sewer extension.
And I, one other thing to add, this is one of, one of the projects that our, our Director of Engineering and Public Works said will actually pay for itself. And it's not just that, oh, well, by the time we're done paying off the note for it, it'll be time to replace it. It will reduce our costs and other things, for instance, like the hauling and also the need to find places to distribute and spread the sludge will be decreased by having this, the dewatering equipment onsite. So it's a good thing environmentally to, to not be hauling water around.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we have the motion and second for approval of this resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. And we'll now exit this special session and move into planning and development. And this is chaired by council member Fall and join, she's joined by council members Risinger, Grace, and Smedley, as is our other council members too that are present tonight. Thank you.
Aye. Thank you. First on the agenda is a zoning change for the Campbell Street area, which is the road where Jackie O's taproom is on and other things down the way. From right now, it's a B3 area. The Planning Commission has put forward a recommendation to change it into a manufacturing area. Other zones that are right around it are already zoned manufacturing, so it would actually kind of concentrate, really it's core area to be manufacturing, which is a zone that we really don't have a lot of in the city. So pretty straightforward. There will be a public hearing before the council meeting on August 17th. So, questions? Council member Graves.
I just wanted to say that I was happy to see several letters in support of this in the attachments from the Planning Commission. I, I think it's definitely the right move for business in that area.
Great. Council member Cottis?
Yes. Thank you, member Fall. Is this, so is this all the way up to Elliott Street and is it on both sides of the street?
Um, it's, it's, if you look on the drive, it's more, it doesn't include all the parking areas on one side of the street. It's more all the other area up to where that tank farm is, which I tried to ignore. So Mayor Patterson, thank you.
To help council member Cottis as well as anyone viewing tonight, that it will be south of Campbell Street and it will go all the way down to Elliott in terms of that plat. Everything that is, has frontage on Stimson between Campbell and Stimson Avenue will remain B. That's a, I believe, a B3 zone along that. I could be wrong, but it's definitely a B business zone. So that'll stay as is. And, yeah, just to echo what council member Fall was saying, and actually, council member Grace, there are three letters of support by, by both individuals who are in what could be the potential new footprint for the M-zone as well as, as the adjoining properties that are on Stimson Avenue.
So, council members, Smedley?
Thank you. I appreciated Paul, Paul Logue's summary of the proposal, which included the map and a little bit of history of the area and how it fits into our comprehensive plan. That context is always helpful. And it seems as though, it, for me, it makes a lot of sense and so, when I'm fully in support of this, it made a lot of sense to me. My question is, do we have a process of notifying, here, here in the proposal, it lists all the contiguous properties. Do we have a process that notifies properties of changes like this? And how do we, how do we determine who gets notified? Thanks.
Um, well, we could ask Debbie how the notification goes. They all, they all are notified through various postal service, services. Debbie, you want to describe what?
Yes, they will all be notified.
Is it just the, what's listed here? And I'm just asking generally, not specifically to this. Is it, when you, when you make changes like this, is it contiguous properties that are contacted?
Yes, it is only those properties listed.
Got it. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
So, and then other people will have the opportunity to have the public hearing also. So that's, goes out as a public hearing like other ones that we have. So Planning Commission also had a public hearing with it, I think. Um, yes. So, did you? In the before time?
We did not. No. Knowing that council had to go through the public hearing process anyway, we opted not to.
Okay.
And largely because of the comments that have been made already tonight, the Planning Commission viewed this as fitting with the comprehensive plan as well as it being within probably what could be our most productive opportunity zone in the city of Athens, which is at the Stimson Avenue quarter.
Right. Great. Thank you. Council member Smedley?
Sorry, I just wanted to highlight a couple of other things that I thought were important that it, and you also already mentioned this, member Fall, the importance of growing the sector and this area, this type of, these type of economic opportunities in our city to diversify ourselves. And it also mentions in the proposal that specifically and also, uh, an opportunity to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it here. Uh, I believe it was a letter of support from Athens Mold and Machine, which has committed to supporting living wage jobs. So that's another thing that we certainly need and want in our city. Thanks.
So, council member Crowell?
Uh, thank you, member Fall. I'm just curious, I should know my zoning code better, but does this change at all the use by the veterans of their social club? It does not. They would be grandfathered with the use that they have and they are in agreement that this is a good thing to do with the rezoning.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the other questions? Okay. Well, that will go for first reading on next Monday, along with the public hearing that will happen before the start of city council. So, next on the agenda is a housing code change to chapter 29 that the law director has asked for. Actually, it was working with our insurance carrier to firm up language, to tighten the process of when you get warrants in order to go and inspect houses, what those terms for the various warrants and then the, after of people's rights and responsibilities to be able to go for appeal. So it's firming up language and describing things a lot more. It's like four pages of wording that you don't want me to talk about tonight because it would be really long, but it is on our drive and it is mostly put forward by the insurance people. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Concerns? Okay. Great. Next is the larger, I think the larger thing that, that I've been working on is the landscaping ordinance, the landscaping code. About a year ago, I was approached by several members of the Shade Tree Commission and people from the Wissendal Plant Group to update the landscape ordinance that we have. So I've been working with them over the last year, putting all the updates that are for the code. And tonight, we can highlight some things or you can actually just ask questions or, I don't know, but you can, I can kind of go over some of the highlights of the new language for 37.01. The legislative aspect of this is we haven't updated our landscape code for a very long time. So there's a lot of stuff that is different now in best management practices. For example, in our definitions, we have no definition of what an invasive species is or an exotic species or a native species. So those sort of, um, definitions have been put in. In the general section of 37.0103, basically, the rest of the changes are changes to what people plant, not how many or where or how the process goes through, because those are all still the same. The way that people, how the planning, or that's the Shade Tree Commission figures out where the trees and how many trees are, is all the same. It's just like what now is acceptable to the city of Athens in these tree planting requirements when somebody develops something like a Maynard's or a subdivision. So that's, that's the general underpinning of this changes. So basically, what it does is for plant species, it gives you credit when you have native trees or shrubs on that piece of property. It's been seen in Athens before where the big giant tree wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't count. And so people done, cut things down, which were really sad to cut down, and then they plant things that are a little sad when they plant them. So it's going to give people the opportunity to get credit for those species and those native plants that are already onsite. So that's a benefit. Other, other requirements is that a certain percentage of plants that you are required to plant will be native species or their variant, like a, what do they call it when it's kind of, Jeff knows, I'm sure. So that, that was the biggest change to it. And then the, uh, in 370105, the Shade Tree requirements introduces the idea of off-site mitigation, which is kind of what happened with Maynard's. They didn't have enough space to plant all the trees they needed to plant. So they are going, they will go through a process of off-site mitigation, which means basically a tree bank. And in the next section, I explain those more. So basically, that's kind of that in a nutshell on that one. So is, are there questions about it? I made a narrative, so I, I hope that helped people. So, councilwoman Gray?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the work and all the time and research that you've put into updating this. And it's really important that we support and encourage native species and, yeah, so thank you for your efforts on this.
Councilmember Claude Felter?
I would also like to thank you, member Fall, for your very hard work on this. I think it's a wonderful idea and I'm just thrilled that people are going to be encouraged to plant native species. My question, my only question at this point is, what do you mean exactly when you say people will get credit for planting natives?
Oh, well, through the process of, the section of code that I can't remember the number of, that there are certain requirements for planting trees. Right now, we have a pretty extensive tree list. So you, you have, like, I want to pick Maynard's because it's kind of an easy chessboard. They had to plant, say, 50 plants, 50 trees to do their landscaping requirements per the ordinance. They can plant pretty much now a lot of different things that really is, are not really very functional nor will they be very resilient when it comes to like climate change. So those lists will be changed because on our, on our list, there are things that are considered invasive and, and such. So our, our lists need to be updated. That's one of the administrative goal tasks that's going to have to be done in the future to implement some of those regulations. So, any other questions? Um. I don't. Councilwoman Smedley?
Thank you. Also, I appreciate the work that went into this. I have a question and then I guess two questions. My first question is, the credit program that you're talking about, does that apply to businesses or businesses and residents? And then my other question is, if you would please just talk, I guess it's a request more than anything, talk a little bit about the Celebration Tree Program and the native and pollinator friendly registration yard. Both of those I thought were pretty neat and are new.
Right. I'm, I'm going to talk about them next because it's a new section.
Oh, got it.
Yeah. So, um, what this is, is that it, it doesn't change where our landscaping requirements are required of businesses that are redeveloping or the, anything that, that triggers a landscape permit, a landscape ordinance permit. So it's just basically, it's not saying necessarily that you have to plant less trees or something. It's saying that we're going to give you credit for, for like a really big tree. And then what we want you to do with the other tree choices that you have, you, you can choose from this native, this native list. And then we have other choices that aren't as good, but you know, they only have to do a certain percentage. So. So...
But is that for residents, or is that for residents or business?
No, it's only for, like, subdivisions, so this is new development, or redevelopment.
New development.
Right. The other stuff in 32, 31, whatever section, the next section, is more residential.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Pete, do you have a question?
Yeah.
I do, thank you. And, so, you know, when I went through this process 10 years ago, I know that, you know, I relied heavily on the recommendations of the Shade Tree Committee and Annabonner at ODNR. Do we find that we have projects that don't necessarily take that guidance? Or is it just that, it sounds like you may have already answered it, and that it sounds like we just needed to update the list a little bit?
It's the updating the list. I think that when the lists and some of the language developed in the Shade Tree Commission, it just haven't been updated for a lot of years. And so, it's the definitions of putting what a, you know, noxious species is, or an invasive species, that will help guide, you know, choices, because this has been shown in both the sustainability plan that we have and the comprehensive plan, that this, you know, is the best thing to do for us, because it also saves money, because they're easier to maintain. If you don't have to mow, it's so much easier that you don't mow. So, those are the things that will be kind of benefits of this. So, other questions? Okay. Okay.
Chris, I do have a question.
Yeah, okay, Chris.
So, part of this, we're wanting to encourage businesses, but are we also, is, are these lists then going to be encompassed for residential persons as well? You know, my question being, like, in your own backyard, is that, are we saying we're eventually going to revamp our regulations so that people who grow, you know, native plants?
Yeah, that's going to be in the next section. This does not apply, and it's never applied to residential landscaping. The only type of residential landscaping is in a subdivision, where you would also be looking at street trees and some of that other tree green infrastructure that is required. And so, but for people who just have plants, that's why we did the next section, the Point 02 section, is to help people who have those type of plants not get them mowed out. So, other questions? Okay. So, the next section is a new, it's a Point 02, it's a new section, that we're, I think the administration and I were thinking that we need a place to put things that the sustainability plan likes us to do, and all the other plans of the green infrastructure, and our green infrastructure planning that will happen as we go forward. We've been doing it already, you know, the stuff at Ransom, that's green infrastructure. So, what we found was there were certain projects or certain programs that would be really awesome for Athens to have. The first one is a tree bank. A tree bank is what required development, say, manards, they couldn't put all their trees on their site, or some other sort of mitigating circumstance, so that they would pay for off-site mitigation for those plants, for those trees. So, they would pay into a fund that the city can then use to plant trees other places, maintain, and, you know, keep our green infrastructure healthy, or identify key conservation areas that may need to be protected, or have, like, a conservation easement put on it. So, that is a way of making sure that we get all the benefits from our Shade Tree Ordinance when there's problems with the landscape area. So, does that make sense? Cool. The next one is the pollinator front yard, front yard pollinator program, which we, a lot of towns have this. We have lots of people in the city that have pollinator front yards. This is about the time of year that people complain about people's yards, because they're now, like, in their full glory of being pollinator gardens. So, I, this one was brought up because I had one of my constituents calling me in tears, and I was talking to her from the parking lot of Anchorage, Kroger's in Anchorage. So, people get really upset about this. It's really important to have pollinator gardens and pollinator infrastructure. And so, this will be a program that people can come and register their front yard for this program. The program is modeled after the Bee City USA program. Basically, you prove that you have four different types of pollinator-friendly plants, processes, housing, those sort of things, and you get a certificate and a sign to put in your front yard that says you're doing your part on the pollinators. As it sits now, we don't think that there might be, like, a suggested fee, like, of $10, but the co-director thought that it might be a good thing to try to do it for free in the beginning. So, that's the other one. And the third one is the Celebration Tree Program. We've had one of these kind of on and off, but now we will develop a list of species and a list of places, so if you want to do some kind of celebration or memorializing, you can do that and go through and help Athens have beautiful trees for celebration. Lisa Lysen was saying that this is a really important thing that Jewish people do when people are born. So, questions about that? Okay. Kluftelter?
No question, but I just really applaud the Celebration Tree idea. I think that is phenomenal, and that was something I was talking about during my campaign as well. So, I'm so glad that's part of this. Thank you, Member Fall.
Yeah. And I was kind of thinking, Mayor Patterson, that we could hold off on mowing things right now, because if we're, if we pass this, then all those beautiful gardens that kind of maybe pollinator gardens were, would be mowed. So, we can talk about it, but, so. Sam?
Thank you. I also appreciate the work you've done on this, Member Fall. A couple of questions. In terms of the green infrastructure, and I'm thinking particularly of bioswales to help reduce stormwater runoff, is there another section of the code that specifically gets into that? I know you're mentioning it here, but am I missing a more detailed explanation?
No. This is a new section, so it is a place for those sort of things to go into. I'm not, if, I'm not sure what our stormwater plan says about bioswales and stuff. That may be actually another plan that kind of needs some updating, and some probably looking at definitions and best management practices, because it's been out there for a little while. But, you know, some of the things, like what the mayor was doing on Ransom and that area of daylighting a stream, we may have a program that you can do that, that would be something that you could put into 37.02, sort of things. So, Mayor?
Okay, I'll do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I can just follow up a couple, I have two more things. Just quickly, the city has an MS4 permit, a municipal stormwater permit, that it does with the university, and there are a number of things required in there to hold that permit, so that we should, it's great that we're updating this and adding this, and we can definitely work to integrate those, the permit process, as well as ordinance. My last piece was just a plug or a non-plug for the registration fee. My first thought is, we don't require homeowners who just have grass front yards to register their grass, and here you have somebody putting in a lot of work to do something good, and then we're going to have them pay for it. I'm not sure that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor?
I have a comment or two, but let me start with just making a slight correction. Tulane is the...
Tulane, sorry. The day lighting.
The creek that runs through, right. Yeah, which was a wonderful project, where we worked with the entire neighborhood and had them all volunteer to really clean things up and remove a lot of invasives. And that's an ongoing project. Anytime you have invasives, it's not like a one and done. You've got to stay on top of them all the time. Two questions I have, I guess. One is with the pollinator gardens and the front yards, if you do not have a sidewalk or curb, like a lot of our neighborhoods, is there a, are you going to declare some level at which that can grow right up to the street itself?
That was something, when we were having our master meeting between Chiki and everybody, that did not come up. So, that's a really good, so like a mow, a mow section that you have to keep it lockable.
Yes, or that can be managed. I mean, there can be no mow zones, depending on what someone has, and I would maybe have tiers of, of the amount of pollinators that you're putting in, and what I should say is, is the number of species that you have in, because we do have some master gardeners in the city that have some rather beautiful native gardens that go right up to the street itself.
Right.
So, maybe that's something to consider within this ordinance, giving a little more clarity as to when you have, you know, frontage that is the street, literally, you have no curb, you have no sidewalk, that there's that to be considered, and I have a comment. So, thank you for bringing up the mowing in the city, because you opened the door for me. As you're well aware, that we have a real, have limited seasonal employees this summer, and so, the citizens are likely seeing a lot of our right-of-way to where it has not been mowed, or it has been sporadically mowed, and that is, that's, you know, because of the city's budget at this point in time. So, what you're bringing up is something that's ideal for that, and it's just making sure that we are able to maintain line of sight as someone is driving along some of our city streets that are perhaps a little windy, or is a higher speed throughway, such as, as an example, Palmeroy Road, or Columbus Road, or something of that nature. So, again, I'm not opposed to this at all. I think this is a great start to this, but I just feel like there needs to be a little bit more detail included in here for clarity.
Well, I think that the, it was more a establishment, and then the nuts and bolts would come out with the writing of the application. There is, the model for this that I used was the Master Garden Program out in Washington. There's a Master Garden Program that does this, and basically, you can have a pollinator garden if you have a certain number of plants that provide pollinator-friendly food three seasons out of four. You know, I mean, it's like four things, you can bring pictures in. So, it's very user-friendly and stuff. So, I'm hoping that a lot of people will be able to take advantage of it. So, so, any other questions about that? Okay, Pete?
Yes, thank you. And actually, this is, this is going back to the tree bank, if that's, if that's all right. The, you know, I know this is something that we've talked about for a while, about, you know, accruing these monies to put trees in other places where they can't fit on projects. So, do we have a path forward now where we will be able to draw these out and put them? And then, my second question is, it was always a little bit of, I've heard a little bit of worry about the idea that a, you know, a development, a contractor, a project could just pay for a tree, but then they're not necessarily responsible for the care, the long-term care of that, of that item, you know, because it's somewhere else in the city.
Right. Well, part of it is with the tree bank language, that process is now going to be in code, instead of being kind of not in code. And so, it gives it a place to, it gives it controls around it, you know, kind of bumpers around it about what it could, what it could be used for. The idea with off-site mitigation is that they're not only paying to have the tree planted, but there's also costs with the long-term maintenance of that, and that goes into the tree bank also. And then, you can use the tree bank itself for maintenance projects on, you know, maybe a nice tract of woods that would make a really cool dog park that needs to have invasives taken out and some other things happen, sort of thing. So, those sort of conservation plans and maintenance of our important green infrastructure since, you know, like, our little pocket of woods and those sort of things. So, that gives it kind of a framework to be hung on, a legal framework to be hung on. So...
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Okay, cool. The next up is Title 49, right-aways. As I say every time now that we bring this up, this is the chance that council has, once these right-aways are passed by council, they go into the administration, then just update them when they need to be. The first one is for a fence on Mill Street. Is that right? So buried in my thing. And then, the second one is for infrastructure with electrical infrastructure with, I was, I just completely am blinking on it.
Spectrum?
Spectrum, thank you. I want, I wanted to say Roadrunner, but, and so, what these do is give the permit holder the ability to build something like a fence, or a, like, telecommunications infrastructure in our right-aways. So, questions about that? Okay. The next up is the...
A question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
The fence on Mill Street, what's it for? Why? Why do they need a fence?
Normally, we don't ask that, but, okay. Mayor?
I want to know.
Okay.
The documentation states that they were having, I think, difficulty with people crossing across the lawn, and so, this is to prevent, basically, people walking through somebody, they're through the yard.
It's to prevent trespass, so...
Okay, so, it's a private residence? It's not a business?
No.
Okay. I thought it might have something to do with the chiller that they were building down there. Okay.
No, no. Mayor? Did you have a question?
No, President Nize summed it up very well.
Okay. Councilmember Grace, did you have?
No, I was just confirming that it is a residential property. Yeah, it's...
Okay. Any other questions about that? Okay. The last on the list is the annexation process for the WODA development that's over by Lurig Road. They're going through the very involved and detailed process of annexation. They have had a series of surveys done for the piece of property, and the original acreage that was put into all the documents is a little bit off, so they need to update all the documents and amend the different ordinances that we passed, that then they have to have in order to go through the other processes. Does that make sense? It's only like a tiny bit, but they have to have a legally binding description and plan, so this will update up. And they will like to have it suspended, because they would like to have this process done by the year end. And you think that's a long time away, but an annexation process, it's just around the corner. So, I will be asking for a suspension. So, well, okay, that was easy. And that's the end of my committee meeting, right? Debbie?
Chris, did you want to talk about the AEP easement?
Oh, I forgot that one. Okay, there's, I want the mayor to say about it, because I couldn't quite get the idea of whether it's our easement that we're asking for, or their easement to cross. So, I got the information a long time ago, and I haven't found it.
No, so you're referring to the microgrid?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, no, this would be for an AEP easement for the microgrid down at the water treatment plant. It's needed for them to be able to put down their utility from the, the actual battery pack system and feeding into the plant, and then also... and feeding into the plant, and then also having it tied into the solar array down at our treatment plant.
And to remind people, this is the microgrid experiment that AEP is doing down in that area. That's what we've talked about in the past, and so.
Is that similar to a microbrew? I wouldn't want to drink it, Jeff, but. I'd get a kick out of it. Right? You might.
It would, it would be a charge. Anyway. Any other things, questions on this? So. Oh.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, it is a temporary easement that the city is granting to AEP.
So. Okay. Well, that is the end of my long, long committee meeting. Thank you.
Okay. And thanks for all those items, and especially the landscaping. And we are finished with our session at 7:52, the committee portion of the meeting at 7:52 PM. And we'll see you all next Monday night, August 17th, at 7 o'clock. Thanks so much. Good night.
17th of August. I received.